Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll move to approve today's agenda.
Second?
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Aye.
Rules, aye.
The minutes.
Three sets.
I reviewed them, the one set appeared to be very difficult to do, there was just a lot of conversation.
Oh my sorry.
Yep, everything looked good to me.
I didn't have any questions in consent. All good. So do I get a motion to approve all three minutes?
Make the motion to approve all three sets of net.
Good.
I will second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Aye.
Rules, aye.
Okay, and the claims. Any questions?
Do we know what the maintenance was on the, for the conservation at Wildcat and Rogers?
I don't, not specifically, without.
Because it's plumbing and heating and price industrial, I don't know what price does. I don't know what kind of maintenance they had.
What was the vendor? I can see if it's like a yearly thing.
It was on page two. One's forty-eight hundred and one, the other was fifty-two fifty.
Who's the vendor? Who is it paid to?
Edwards Plumbing and Heating and Price Industrial. I didn't know if they had to charge air conditions, or air conditioners up or something.
Actually, I think Shelby's gonna be in here, you can ask her when she comes down.
Yeah, it's not a huge deal, I just was wondering what we had to do.
And anytime when you get that list ahead of time, if you have a question to the department head, you'll need to ask them.
Sure, okay.
So you want to hold off the petition moving forward?
No, I mean, we can okay it.
Yeah, it's fine, I just was just curious.
Who or what it was for.
Yep, yeah.
I can't tell you.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Second?
Alright, call for a vote on the claims.
Tippit, aye.
Aye.
Rules, aye.
Also, I see we got a couple American relief funds.
There's one in there, yeah. Two.
Yes, courthouse clock and.
Oh yeah, forgot about that one.
Gradification, concrete rival.
Yep, so we only have one project left to pay for out of ARPA. That would be the half of the emergency vehicle. So then hopefully, show and bruise the spreadsheet, because we've collected interest on that fund a little bit. You know, we've allocated all that out, radio project, maybe we can offset that with some of that excess.
For the maintenance agreement.
It has been paid by the 25. So, that's my goal, to see if we can do that.
Hopefully, there's a big chunk left to offset the maintenance agreement.
Almost, I think it was like, almost a hundred thousand.
I could.
At the time, with all of our interest, and I left a cushion in case something were to come in over than what we quoted, but. So.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the two, and then read the numbers out?
The vendor and the amounts, please.
For the ARPA fund?
Yep.
I'll move to approve the claims for the ARPA from funds, and one was for the driveway cement work over at Transportation Building. That was twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. And the other was for the courthouse clock, and that is thirty-nine thousand dollars.
The Jackson Concrete was one, and then who was the clock guy?
Mechanical Watch Supply.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Aye.
Rules, aye.
So, next week too, we'll be doing the first run of the EMS claims on its own, so.
Okay.
Doesn't suffer?
Yep, yep, after that new policy, that's how we're gonna do it. Do you want to do Sarah while she's in here, quick?
Who we got?
Sarah, so she's, get back to her.
Okay.
Or, for number eight. I know Sarah and I have been discussing a few things, and I talked with Derek. It's just kind of a lot of unknowns still with her being our employee, the payroll and stuff. Some of the questions she's having was, like, who's IT support the vehicle, like, some of that, so we're hoping to get better clarification.
She was signing my timesheet, I mean, just little things that keep bouncing back and forth, and there just needs to be some clarity. I'm really frustrated.
I mean, because like, we don't oversee where she's at, so like, her signing off on her timesheet, like.
Well, first question I had, and I can't believe I didn't include this in the email, because I didn't look at the end. Did we receive the signed copy back from them on this?
I have not yet.
Okay, that's the first problem, we need that.
Because what I've given you is the one that they signed and was sent to them.
And so, that is the first thing we need, because that essentially shows that everyone agreed to what's in that piece of paper. And so, I can send an email, or whatever, to whomever I need to.
I can get you some.
Yeah, yeah, we need that signed, and with us, just because like, it's just.
You're talking about the MOU.
MOU, yep.
Yep, I can get you that.
And I know like, and I think, just because, you know, given the changes and stuff too. And we did have this, like, we're essentially like, emergency meeting, just so that, because the timing wise, it probably wasn't clear about like, what it said in there, like, for instance, you know, I took out that language of like, the rentals, renting the room, which don't have to do, but the big thing is, and this is the big thing that I definitely wanted in there, and I made this known to you all, but I'll just say again, for everybody's sake, like, there's a provision in here that essentially says that, you know, we are essentially just repaying benefits and all that kind of stuff. And so like, that'll fall like, under our protocols, what we need to do for there, especially for like, because I know it says like, travel costs and all that, that would be like, say, when I go to a conference, I have to fill out a sheet that says, I traveled ninety-some miles or whatever, and then submit it to the auditor and then get a separate check. You know, that's just within those types of protocols, and I think that falls within a provision. I think the provision that everyone's probably, we're not clear of, is who has control, supervision, and is considered an employee. Well, given my concerns, you know, what we talked about, you know, definitely want to make it clear that, you know, she's performing DAP duties, and she's got to be under their control and supervision for that, because we have nothing to do with DAP anymore, or that region, because of the changes with the state. You know, we're just essentially helping out, filling the gaps with payments and stuff, and making sure titles get exchanged, per what we talked about in other meetings. And so, I think, as far as like, say, timesheets go, it makes sense that we follow our protocols, but as far as like, how everything else goes for employment and support that way, I was just under the idea that would go under the supervision and control part of DAP, which would make sense to.
If you go like, her mileage and travel, she would submit directly to them, because that's separate from our payroll.
Yes.
I mean, we didn't budget, we didn't budget for reimbursement for travel and mileage, because I was told it was just strictly the payroll portion.
Wages and benefits is what we are paying from here, and that we will be reimbursed.
Because that would be anything else.
Yeah, expenses such as office supplies, technology, travel costs, et cetera, can be centralized, will be paid directly by the DAP, so.
Okay.
Yep, that's what says in there.
We're clear on that.
Yep, but I guess I was going off of the payroll type stuff, and so, I apologize.
No, that's fine, because.
That's why we're doing this.
I wanted to make sure, and Sarah, like, where, who she needs to go to when she has those questions and stuff.
And I work for DAP, I don't work for the ASO. The ASO is completely different.
And I finally, did you see that email? I did receive an email this morning, like, all the vehicles and stuff.
I have not.
Okay, so, I'll tell you what he said, from Dawn Frimick. Regarding the vehicles, he said they can be placed where they are needed the most, there will be continuous needs assessment review, replacement of the cars, you know, and going forward, he said you're welcome to discuss further with the hiring manager. Because I know we, you know, the vehicles are still sitting out here, we're gonna transfer the titles, but as far as who's picking them up to get the keys, before I just hand it over and throw them stuff.
So essentially, the only thing that we have to really concern about, by the sounds of it, is like, because the way we do our hours for, or I say payroll, is we have it signed off, which is how we do things, and so I feel like that's the only thing that we probably really need. Everything else sounds like.
So maybe the DAP, somebody at the DAP can look at it prior, because we aren't gonna know where she's at or doing, so.
Yeah, I did find.
Yeah.
My question was, I don't know if you worked or not.
Have my number, but you have my number, Tracy.
I know it, I know it, but I'm.
We're not saying we don't trust you, it's just like.
I'm not saying that either, but.
Not you, but to me, whoever.
But feel my frustration though, like, like you guys are the ones that are supposed to be making these decisions, and people are coming to me saying, we'll go to you, then I go to you, and then I'm said, means we'll go to them, so, like. It's not my responsibility to make these decisions.
Who's your supervisor? Yeah, that's what I want to know, who's your, who do you report to?
Jody. Currently, I'm their supervisor, yeah, so like, I'm in Lynn County, and my, my timesheet is signed off by a Lynn County employee. Because I'm a Lynn County employee.
But granted, like, anybody, I mean.
That's who's paying. But yeah.
When you enter in your timesheet, you're gonna say, I work six, you know, eight hours here, six of it was six, or sick leave, or, but what I'm saying is like.
Yeah, if you'd like us to review it before you do sign off.
Yeah, I just feel like.
That's, I think that's doable.
Since you're, you're the one giving her every duty, so know where she's at, like, somebody else needs to maybe just.
Worse scenario, have two people sign it, she can sign it, and you okay it, I'll okay it too.
I would appreciate that, for beautiful reasons.
I mean, it feels like you don't trust me.
No, no, Eddie.
It's not that at all, but it's like, we get, we have to prove that we've had a supervisor look at it, and.
Jody and I keep in touch with each other anyway, like, she knows Ray Matt, she knows if I'm in Black Hawk County, she knows, I've been in Independence.
And then like, for your IT stuff, then you're gonna receive that from the DAP, or the, I would assume, because it's all your state programs, correct?
That would be a decision that you guys would need to make, how much you want to support or not. I'm still supported by Lynn County IT, but you can make that decision however you would like to.
Okay, to me, that just didn't make sense, because it's none of our county programs or county software servers type thing, so. That's where I feel like we needed to clarify, because I'm stuck in the middle trying to help Sarah, and I was told it was strictly just benefits and payroll.
Yeah, and if that's something you guys don't want to do, then just let us know, and then we can move in a.
Can you guys take care of the IT for us? Or, I guess I don't know how the DAP, that's part of the problem, is we don't know how.
Like, mine is a dual, so Lynn County takes care of my computer, my computer's owned by Lynn County. And then, basically, all of the stuff that gets my computer going, and then we add on the Microsoft license for the Eastern Georgia DAP.
But I'm assuming you're also working on Lynn County's network?
I am on Lynn County's network, but I'm not doing like, Lynn County work, I'm only doing, I'm a hundred percent disability accessible.
But see, that, that makes sense, because, you know, we don't have a central location, Sarah here in our network, because we have certain security protocols, which would make sense that our IT would help, but if she's not, we don't have those types of things.
Like, do you know what Jones County is planning to do? Well, they're gonna go with that other, I mean, are they supporting them then, or how is that working?
The region will.
The region will support them, so they are in the same boat that I am, but they.
Jones County, the last I.
They're not, no, they're not employing at all.
They're not doing anything.
No, I don't mean them, the company that took over, like, will they be providing any of that, or will that be all under the DAP?
The contract just got signed last, I'm not sure.
Because they're in the same, they're in the same boat that I am, they'll be coming back to work on Monday.
There's gonna be lots of questions moving forward. It's just gonna have to be fluid as we go, because nobody knows.
We didn't sign an agreement for anything but wages.
Yep.
So any other IT stuff that comes up.
You guys didn't discuss it though.
There's nothing written, and we're gonna, we're gonna get reimbursed for this.
But nothing was discussed of that, that's why I wanted to come today, because nobody discussed any of that.
I wasn't in that meeting, so, yeah. I don't know if you guys thought all that out before.
Our agreement is for wages and benefits, and that's it.
Because otherwise, there'd be licensing fees for email and all that.
It'd be a different story if you were based on that kind of.
I get that, I totally get that, but however, you guys are here to make these big decisions, so, that's my frustration, is that I, I'm kind of at everybody's beck and call, and I'm out here on an island.
And you're on an island that doesn't have any answers, and we're all in that same island too. As it moves forward, we'll get answers.
At least now we have a point of contact, Jody, right?
Yeah, I, yes, or Julie Davidson also, Dev Seymour Guard, all, Dev, or Julie's the CEO, Dev is the COO, and then I'm the supervisor for the northern counties.
And Haley, you have, do you have all their contacts? Okay, perfect.
So this Dawn is just basically handling the property stuff?
He's doing a lot of the property stuff, yes.
Okay.
And we'll get you a copy of the sign, won't you?
That would be fantastic, thank you.
But keep in mind, this is a district that we're not members of. We're in the district going the other direction.
Regarding that, do we have a contact for our area yet assigned to us? I have not.
She comes here on Tuesdays, her name's Brenda Daly, she's down in that little conference room to the HHS.
We'll meet her, because I have not heard anything.
She's here Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think on Thursday, she's supposed to be out at Cedar Valley Ranch.
What's her name?
Brenda Daly. I brought, well, she was here, I don't know if it was two weeks ago, but you guys had already ended your meeting, because I was gonna introduce her to you.
So she's gonna be taking care of our needs in Benton County then?
And she's only here on Tuesdays?
She's coming from Powashie County.
Okay. That's the direction we go now.
Okay, hopefully, we give you some answers and some guidance now.
And just please give me some grace with all of this, and my frustration and outward smartiness, because, yeah, it's been really hard.
Do the same with us, because we don't know either.
Wish you would have taken my advice on the internal navigator. You wanted to do that, Ron, you talked to me for months about that, and then, and then it did nothing, like, it would have solved all of this.
Any other questions?
Don't.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Grace?
I just want to provide an update on our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, otherwise known as our FEP grant for FY26. I shared these updates at our last Board of Health meeting, and I just want to come here and share them with you guys today. On July 1st, Service Area 6, which is comprised of fourteen counties in this part of the state, we received notice from Iowa HHS that there was an amendment to our FEP contract for FY26. That amendment was notification that we are receiving currently seventy percent of the anticipated funding that we had expected for FY26. What that means is, originally, the service area as a whole, so all fourteen of us, were going to be awarded about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Iowa HHS can now only guarantee a little over, about four hundred and five thousand. What that means for Benton County is, we had originally planned to be receiving for FY26 approximately eighteen thousand seventy-six dollars. As of right now, they can only guarantee a little over ninety-one hundred. And, so we, like I said, we just received that information on July 1st. Iowa HHS, we just, I just went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, they're basically just kind of in limbo, waiting for some more movement at the federal level, to find out if that remaining thirty percent is going to be awarded or not. Hoping that we'll know something later this summer, early fall, but again, that all depends on, on what's going on at the federal level, whether that remaining thirty percent will be awarded to us. So basically, I just wanted to kind of come here, inform you guys that information. While we await to hear more from Iowa HHS, the plan is to just remain conservative with spending, which should not be an issue, one, the fiscal year just started, and two, we do not have any large supplies purchases planned. We've made a lot of those purchases in previous grant years, so we're just kind of in a holding pattern right now, until we await to hear more information. And of course, when we do find out either way, whether we are going to be limited to that seventy percent amount, or the remaining funds will be awarded, I will of course, let the Board of Health know, and let you guys know. Just want to provide that update, is there any additional questions?
Those are measles.
Currently have seven confirmed cases in Iowa. The Iowa HHS updates their tracker weekly on Thursdays. My department, other local public health departments, have been very well-trained in, in this lately by Iowa HHS and the Center for Acute Disease Epidemiology at the state. We also have a really wonderful regional epidemiologist who works hand in hand with us. So right now, we're currently just in a monitoring phase, and of course, if there were to be a confirmed case of measles in Benton County, you would of course, hear from my department, and we have a couple of protocols and procedures that we would follow from there. Biggest thing is, we are still able to provide MMR at no cost to anyone over the age of one who is interested. We are able to be really flexible with scheduling, so please just reach out to our office or stop by, and we can definitely get something worked out. So yes, currently, we're, we're just kind of waiting at this point, so.
But we don't have a confirmed case here.
We do not, no.
Anything close?
Close, in neighboring counties, however, nothing, nothing confirmed, not a confirmed case, and that's based on, like, the residence of the individual, but as of right now, we do not have any confirmed cases. But that may change, and of course, when it does, you will hear from my department ASAP. Anything else? Okay, yes.
Hey, I got one here, we can move real quick. We have a person from the Sheriff's Office that wants to resign Paige Rambo.
The date, July 27th.
So can I get a motion to accept the resignation of Paige Rambo on July 27th, her last working day?
I would make the motion to accept the resignation of Paige Rambo from the Sheriff's Department as a dispatcher. Last day is July 27th.
Second?
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Aye.
Rules, aye.
Okay, and then she would like to donate her sick time, her remaining sick leave, to bank for an employee in the Sheriff's Office?
Okay.
So, if you guys want to formally approve that, so we have it on record.
It's not to any individual, it's just set aside?
It's Bonnie Ellinger, she's let us use her name before, so.
Okay.
You've got the, the letter, whatever, from Paige?
Yes, from Paige, Kalisha does, so. Did you, you guys knew that too, right? Yep, yep, so we just need your formal approval on that.
I would move to approve the sick time donation from Paige Rambo.
Good second. Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Aye.
Rules, aye.
I want to say it was like, two hundred hours, does that sound right?
And then Haley, what can you tell me about number five, Discuss Amending Resolution 1311 Lost Gifted?
Okay, so as you're aware, we've had that resolution in place for quite some time, that when like, fire trucks get purchased from the Fire Department, or ambulance get purchased, they come bringing the invoice to you, and we gift them back ten percent match, up to your discretion, that. Normally, we'll go back to that entity, say, Vitt Fire Department gets a part of that ten percent. But now, things have changed with the EMS policy, I mean, if, if these entities are coming forward to use the EMS trust fund to purchase these vehicles, and we recently had two, like, that's on the agenda, North Benton Ambulance and Blairstown. North Benton is buying a new ambulance, Blairstown is getting a, what do they call it, a fly car type thing. So, for the ten percent gifting, and I know Derek reached out, and we've talked to him, and he received that email, so, we want clarification, because if we were, and I did talk to the audit firm yesterday too on that, because normally, like I said, we repay back that entity, in this situation, we would want to pay the vendor, like, Clark Chevrolet would be the one, and then where the ambulance goes. So if you were to still approve that ten percent, I would pay that total amount. So say the truck was seventy-seven thousand, seventy-seven hundred would come from the lost fund, the remainder would come from the EMS. But we need some kind of clarification in that resolution, I believe, to, to state if you're using EMS trust funds. Just because I don't want anybody to be paid over and above, but, as we've mentioned, they now have that EMS funds available. Do we want to save the lost funds for other reasons? I mean, that's where you guys come in and make those decisions.
Like, me personally, I feel like they're double dipping.
Even though it's not going above what they're purchasing, and that's kind of where my concern was, I wanted you guys to address it.
Just me speaking, I want to hear what you two guys got.
Well, I, I agree with, with Tracy, if they have the funding through EMS, then that's what it was designed for, and that's what it's supposed to be used for. And then, anything else as far as the lost funds, we'd be depleting that for other departments that don't have access to the EMS fund. So I would say, take it from one, not the other.
I also, I also agree with that. It seems like a double dipping situation, the other people don't even have access to the EMS, so it's, I agree, we should do from one place.
So, what I'll do is, we'll probably draft up somewhere, and I'll have Derek help me, to amend that other resolution. Just to have something in regards to the EMS fund now.
And I can do a quick amendment to, to the policy, and I apologize.
Well, I don't know that we have to.
I never, I actually didn't even know that lost funds were, who they were available to.
It doesn't happen very often, and now all of a sudden, it's like.
Yeah, so, because I would have probably proposed maybe a, a section in there.
I don't know that we have to amend the EMS policy, I think if we just amend our lost gift.
That, that's fine too.
That one will save you from amending the policy.
Perfect, alright, let's just do that.
So I'll probably bring that back next week, but I, it needed to be addressed today, because we have those other two that are getting paid next week for EMS claims, so. because we have those other two that are getting paid next week for EMS claims, so. So if you're denying the lost gifts, then I would just maybe state that, and then we'll know to pay it all, all out of the EMS trust fund for number 11 and 12. To kind of all tie together.
So we need a motion on that? Is that what we're looking for, or just?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you can table the number six until next week after further.
When we have, when we have something written down?
Yep, I just wanted your, to discuss it today, so I know what to put in there for verbiage.
Well, I would make a motion to table item six, amending the Resolution 13-11 Lost Gifting until we have a new, a new resolution in front of us.
Okay.
I would make the motion to...
You can second his other one first.
Oh, I'll second yours first. Table in the amendment for the lost gift.
I guess, Derek, my question is, is this going to throw like Bell Plain into a hurt for their ambulance?
Um, well, is it?
You know what I mean, that's a chunk of change that they got to whip out.
For North Benton, Blairstown? You said Bell Plain.
Is it North Benton?
North Benton has the $207,000.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Let me look at that policy, because I did include what was available to them on that policy. Um, I have to just pull it up.
I can pull that up, too. You mean their allotment?
Yeah.
For the year?
I think it's like 60 years.
It is like...
Right? Oh, I thought.
Yeah, I can pull it up real quick, too.
Um, I have 120 grand.
For North Benton?
Oh, North Benton, 400.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they have more.
So they got more than enough to try to check them?
Yes. And they, you know, some of these entities didn't use it all from last year.
So that additional 10% would just come out of the?
EMS trust fund.
EMS trust fund.
So that, the full, yeah.
So it's more.
But see, that's like, you know, for them up here in Benton, that's 20,000. That's a complicated.
Yeah. But the money is available in the EMS trust fund.
Okay. I just, I didn't want to slow the process down for them, not getting that track.
Regardless, the claim's going to get paid, I just need to know where it's coming from.
Okay, all right, we got a motion and a second, so we'll call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aman, aye.
Bull's aye.
So your motion was to deny using lost funds?
Correct.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yes. And then the clarification would be for, it's going to come out of the EMS trust fund.
All right.
Actually, we're not called three things at right?
Yep.
Okay, Discuss, Approve Signature, CD, BD, Single Audit Form for Conservation Replanting. I thought Shelby would be here today.
Um, I have that form in there, though. So if you want to go ahead and just sign that, because I have to scan it back, so that's when we do our, the single federal audit, which we'll do. So I'll put in the date, it'll probably be February of '26 before it's available to them. Because we're on fiscal year '25 audit right now. So anytime we have federal money coming in, it's over that threshold, we have to do what's called the federal audit as well. And that's what they're asking for.
Are we over or under the?
We're over it, because we have all the ARPA and that, so we'll probably be over it at least this year. Next year, we might not have to do it.
So the audits are flying.
And we have to look at some of the grant, like the stuff that Secondary Roads gets, we have that LAE through BHS, so all those combined meet that threshold. If you remember, we did all these for the watershed, too.
Yep, I remember that. I didn't think conservation would give that much.
It's not just for those, but as a county as a whole, we have to.
So this is for this audit, it's an aggregate thing?
Right, they're asking if the county has to do a federal audit, and yes, we do.
You got the ARPA files wrong. We have to do that.
So they so much for the conservation, it's for everything in the county?
Right.
Got it, got it. Good.
Because we combine it all into one federal.
Hold on, just say, through the conservation tree replanning.
So if you know, all those grants have certain numbers assigned to them, and yeah, they have to keep track on the CLG website still.
Can I get a motion, I signed, federal audit?
I would make the motion to have the board chair sign the audit form there for the grant. Especially for the entire county, but this particular one is for conservation.
Second. Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aman, aye.
Bull's aye.
So you have a vacancy?
Yep.
And the Civil Service Commission has three members, one is appointed by the county attorney, and two are appointed by the board supervisor. So you have a vacancy due to the resignation of Jennifer Srebnik. So I was, I was speaking to Amy Van Wetchel, and she said she'd be willing to serve. And you have to, you know, you still try to have, have these missions, gender balance, so there's two men, she would be the woman.
Okay. Does she have to provide a letter that says that she's?
You guys have to be the one that appoint her.
Just a little.
Yeah, she's verbally said she was interested. And I know David Vermerdahl had spoken to her, too, because he's on the board, too, so. But it's up to you guys, who you appoint.
I would make the motion to appoint Amy Van Wetchel to the Civil Service Commission.
I would second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Aman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Uh, I've got meetings this week.
I didn't have any last week, and I do have one today following this week with the health, with the public health.
They had landfill last week, company moved in and started cutting the brush up and everything, getting ready to start digging it out for the new ancestor.
Lagoon?
Yeah, Lagoon.
So they started that project?
And they started it last week, rubbed the trees out, hollowed the willows and all that, getting them knocked out. And then also, last week, I sat in on Thursday for the WMA Zoom meeting. And then hire Yell now to run the WMA, so I guess that's about it.
Yeah, I think she's satisfied.
We're not the fiscal agents of that anymore?
No, thank you very much.
No. They are applying for some grants, but they ain't got anything yet. But it, I guess we can delve down to some of these other things. Unfinished business, we don't have anything?
Not doing it, or?
We open to the public, interesting comments, we'll limit to three minutes.
Dogs are coming.
Okay, I'll wait.
Public events is coming. I remember a conversation we had years ago.
Yeah.
It's in there.
25 to the Senate.
Has it been that long?
I know, it's crazy.
Wow.
Um, I could brainstorm a little bit. Are you wanting to still do the all-employee meeting in the hall that we do?
I think so.
Because I know Ray had mentioned, Alicia upstairs would have some training to offer, and then we have to do our harassment training, but that might be done online, right?
Mm-hmm.
So possibly.
They're thinking, yeah.
Possibly. But at least we could still go over maybe some of the, those kind of things, how they're going to do it. We might have a little update on like some of the new payroll system, and Alicia and Gina talked on that. I don't know. I just need your thoughts moving forward, because we would recognize the years of service and stuff again, to maybe try to just do it in one half-day session if we could, or I know it's hard to get everybody in one, so maybe shorten, shorten it up a little bit.
You don't want to check the county down, you know what I mean, for half a day?
Yeah.
Do it a day, but morning and an afternoon like we've been doing it. But I guess, as for the training, I would...
We...
Tell them, hey, we're Benton County, we're not all computer literate.
Yeah, and I, I think they're going to offer it as well, that you can go to a lab.
Or, that's what I wondered, if you could, if we could zoom in, so say like Secondary Roads, who don't have laptops?
Right.
Maybe they can sit and watch it all together in that situation.
You'd be, they'd have one done, right. Okay. I think we've had quite a bit of change go on, we've got change in HR, bringing everybody up to speed on that.
See, I was even wondering if we could have it over here at Transportation Building, instead of doing it where we like did. Just a thought, yeah, just a thought.
Is it big enough in there?
Oh, yeah.
Like, in the shop area?
Shop area. The only thing I don't know about is the chairs.
I was gonna say, have you talked to Mark or Dell?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
I just threw this out.
Yep, well, this is what I need help with brainstorming, because it will be having the city school election coming up, and I need to get some of this pre-planning done, so.
Could probably, we brought all tables and chairs from Benton Fire, we've got a bunch.
They, I don't think they let non-fire, they use that anymore, though.
Oh, maybe they've changed their policy. We're gonna have to ask the chief.
Okay. I'm just throwing it out there, a thought, I don't know, they've tried this before, but south of town here, you know what I mean?
It's like 50 bucks.
I know it's reasonable, but I mean, yes.
We've had it in our third-floor courtroom before, too.
Yeah.
Haley, if you need chairs, you might want to check with the Shell's work school district, a power form that you can fill out, and public can borrow chairs and tables.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I got entities around New Hall that I can borrow for free, too, but really don't, really should thought, bring 40 or 50 chairs up there and pick up and turn it, I'll bring them back.
Okay.
But it's just an idea.
Yep, but, okay.
Just throwing it out there.
Gets the ball rolling, anyway.
We got 15 minutes, you want to just recess? Our sheriff, you want to talk about anything?
Tap dance.
Looks more like a River Dancer to me, it said.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Oh, why?
A River Dancer.
The River Dancer, remember those guys?
Well, there's quite a bit of floor space here.
I know that.
Hi, Ray, you want to set the front table?
Whatever you want me?
Sure. We were just getting ready to recess, and we're committed, unless you have any updates you want to give.
Have you talked about the ordinance?
That's another table.
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
We were just brainstorming about the all-employee meeting, I know you said you had some training for stuff you wanted to do longer.
Yeah, Alicia's working on a presentation, I think it'll be very interesting. I thought I would give a few and figure out how we're going to do, you know, any concessions we might want or not want. That's my guess for that, like last year. So, yeah, I just got my time to, I have my list to call you, or go sit down and talk to you.
Oh, I know.
Sit here.
That's kind of, I just wanted to make sure they wanted to still go forward with an all-employee.
Yeah, well, I don't know if these will be all, you know, all that long, but, you know, it's probably...
We have in the past closed offices for a few hours, so that everybody could go at the same time, too.
That'd be a lot easier.
If it's a time constraint.
That'd be a lot easier, if we could just do it once and in and out and...
Like later in the day, or first thing in the morning? I know the Secondary Roads guys, probably first thing in the morning before they get out and...
What's the board thinking of that idea?
Well, I wasn't even taking on Friday.
Yeah, a lot of people like to take Friday off.
Friday and Mondays, yeah, I don't know, maybe have a better turnout in the middle of the week.
Are you opposed to one shorter, everybody come?
Short one and just have light refreshments instead of a meal, save money.
You think in like 10 to 1 type of a thing?
Or like 8 to 10?
8 to 10.
If we can get it all under two hours, I mean, yeah, we can, I'll come back and get formal action to set the date and stuff.
Yeah, we just, we just need to know whether you want to do it twice, half and half, or all at once.
Probably half and half, well, I think, right? Everybody, close them down, close them the whole county down for...
So a couple people, please, if I'm going to go to one, they're not?
Yeah, that's been done in the past.
Okay. Well, are the services are still open?
It's appreciated. It's not going to share in the history.
I like that, I need a mask on the way.
I know where you live.
Well, here.
You want me to second you?
Yeah, or I can, I can reach out to her, too, and see if that's something that they're going to go forward, at least maybe if we have like the program or whatever, like I said, we could try to watch it together, too.
Well, that's it, yeah. I know what they're talking, it's an hour, is the commitment.
Right.
And I didn't know if they, if we brought somebody in for that, you know, sometimes those things go a little quicker.
Yeah.
Are we still over meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Have you got a motion to go on recess?
I'll make a motion to recess, in a second.
All right, all favor?
Aye.
Aman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Are we on, Andy?
We are live.
Yeah. We're here again for the second reading, and changes that were made from last week on ordinance 80, annual protection and control.
Um, I, I kind of was telling everybody in the room, and I'll say it again, before we got back online, we do have stacks of the changes, copies of the changes from what was made this past week. I know county attorney Lau and our intern have been, legal intern have been working hard on trying to, with everyone's comments, and yeah, I know we got county attorney Lau here to hear comments as well. I'm probably do a lot of note-taking like I did last time, and then, you know, we, of course, once we break up from here, talk about these notes and stuff, and yeah, so anyway, I guess the floor is up anyway, so.
Yeah, so after, after Derek came back last week, we sat down... Yeah, so after, after Gary came back last week, we sat down, talked about the discussion that was had, and he sent me his notes, and there appeared to be some, um, concerns that, that weren't really addressed in the ordinance before, I just tried to do that. So there's a lot of changes from last week, and I'm not, I'm not sure where we're even close to being, to where we need to be in the end, so you know, we'll keep working on it, but a couple things that, there was a concern on behalf of law enforcement that we're not great this ordinance that would place a huge burden on them, so I took that into account. We had discussion apparently about rabies and what do we do in that situation, so I tried to address that, I'm not sure, and I'll go through it in a second, but I'm not sure that we have that fully hammered out yet. And then Tracy had a concern about essentially having more options or having, you know, short of the surrender and destruction part of it. So I added a piece to the appeal hearing to essentially provide more protections for dog owners. I also put in some language that protects property owners a little bit more than before because obviously if your dog's on your land and someone comes on that when they shouldn't be on your land, that, that changes the picture. So, um, the first thing I tried to tackle was the definition of at-large, because I don't think we had it, we were, it needs to be, and and I took out the language on or off property, so to simplify it, at-large means not confined and not under the control of its owner. Simplified it to make it more understanding. So, um, we created some exceptions to attack when a dog's at large, and if a, if a homeowner posts, do not enter my property, dog, and you go on there and you're bitten by his dog, then in this situation, it would not be the dog's fault, because you're not where you're supposed to be, you're violating the law. And along with that, if your domestic pet goes onto your neighbor's property and the neighbor's dog attacks your domestic pet, your domestic pet is not where it's supposed to be, so in that situation, it would not be held against the dog. So I think that provides a little more protection for the landowner or dog owner when the dog's on this property, which they should have. Um, at-large, before it said law enforcement shall pick them up, we achieved that in May. The only three situations where it requires the sheriff to pick up an animal, and that if it's been at-large three times in thirty days, because then they're chronically at-large and it's a problem. Of course, if there's been a bite, and then they have to take the dog in because they... Or if it's at-large with no rabies certificate on the collar, and they would have to take it in. I put in here that in that situation, or when a dog bites, that we would designate a contract with a vet, and take that dog to the vet and have them checked out to see if they had rabies before the dog would be released. That way, the bite victim would have, you know, a chance of understanding what the situation was. After I put language into that effect, I learned that there's actually an incubation period, which I'm not an expert on rabies, so I didn't know that. So I've gotta go back and figure out what that means, whether we can even do it this way, given there's an incubation period for rabies. But I think if you're bitten by a dog, you should have, you should have the ability to find out if that dog's had rabies, and and the state statute doesn't provide language to help with that at all. So we're trying to figure out how we can do that and still, you know, within constitutional parameters. But that's my initial thought, so I have to go back and add in based on what the incubation period looks like. Let's see. What was here, what was here, eighty point nine, what was that one?
That one was the immunization that we pulled from the Iowa code.
I made changes to eighty point nine to reflect the state statute, that's all that changes there. I changed the definition of animal control officer, because that's just kind of the state language. What I did was define animal control officer as any person designated by the board or the sheriff to enforce the laws of, under the ordinance or the statute. So, in this situation, the board could say, okay, we want you to be the person who controls picking up dogs. Or you could say, I want the sheriff to designate somebody, and the sheriff would have that ability, which I think makes more sense, because it gives the sheriff flexibility and doesn't just say, you're gonna do it, that he can actually appoint somebody. You know, if we're gonna do this though, we're gonna have to have a budget amendment, because we don't have anybody to task these responsibilities right now. And I, I think this may become a bigger and bigger issue as we go on down the road. We don't have a vehicle to transport these dogs, or, you know, it's, there's just a lot involved. Because of that, I put language in here that we shall contact with the shelter that will pick up and house the dog if we need them to. So, I just haven't had the time to pursue finding somebody to do that. But I, I don't think the sheriff really wants to have to stop, you know, investigation to go haul a dog to Cedar Rapids. So we have to figure out how that works, and I haven't had a chance to sit down with Dave yet, but I think we can, I think we can figure something out. But I didn't want to saddle law enforcement with being the animal control person necessarily, or having to transport the dog or dogs when we're in this situation. I think the one piece we still have to figure out is, if we're at a scene, we have to take a dog immediately, what do we do? So, I need to talk to Dave about that. Tracy's comments about having other options, I really gave that some thought. The way I addressed it under eighty point nineteen, which is the variance ordinance. You know, if we have a hearing now, you can consider an ordinance that they requested, kind of thing. I changed the language, saying that you have to make a finding in the hearing that the variation isn't appropriate. So, when you get an appeal of an order, under this reading, one of the things you would consider is, is there an alternative to to destroying this animal? You know, for example, GPS fencing, would that protect the neighbors and other, you know, other domestic pets from this animal? By requiring that, then I think that makes us do the analysis to see if we really need to destroy somebody's pet. So I think that's the changes I made, like I said, I, we're not there, I'm not, I'm not sure we have the answer on the, on the rabies part of it yet, but we're still working. You know, we've, we looked at a lot of different ordinances. She did a lot of this drafting, and she's done a nice job getting this, this is a hard subject. And this is a statute ordinance, we're not gonna get perfect, it's just not doable. You know, the, the law in some areas is, is not supportive, what we feel about county. And, and as you know, people are polarized on some of these things in the statute, so I'll answer your questions, if anybody has questions, I tried to listen to everybody's concerns from last week and address them, so that's where we're at right now.
Ray, do we need to have, or maybe it's not even kind of required, proof, what if someone says, well, it's not my dog? Or it's not my cat? Is there anything that states that causes them to be the, the owner of it? I mean, is it, if you feed an animal, they're...
There's a definition of owner in here.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's, um...
Okay, under thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen.
Yeah, there's an owner.
And that's Iowa code?
Yeah, that's right, Iowa code.
And that's with that, thank you. Ah, that was easy.
I tried to think of everything. Other questions?
Dave, what do you do now? President Day?
We kinda rely on the Humane Society. Do you, again, we don't have me have to break down two finger, you know, how many calls that, to, to jump to this level, I guess. We contact the Humane Society, this is who we have trans, I mean, we, we're not equipped to transfer animals right now, so...
You say the Humane Society has Cedar Rapids?
Yeah.
And do they come get the dog?
Yes.
But now, they won't come, if you got a dog running at large and needs after him, and say it bit somebody, nobody can, they don't come chase dogs.
No, it's gotta be confined also, right. Right.
So we need that person between the event and the Humane Society still somehow to capture the dog and hold it till they get here.
I, I for one, do not want to pay our deputy sheriffs to be chasing dogs.
I don't either, and it doesn't make sense.
Good, 'cause all the equipment you would need to do it.
Yeah.
The protective equipment and gear and everything.
Training.
Training.
Good, great.
And I, and I really, I, I mean, our people drive decent automobiles, and I don't want them hauling animals in them.
You couldn't touch it for a hundred thousand a year, you wouldn't even be able to touch it for that.
That's true.
Now, I guess I don't know if the Humane Society actually quarantines dogs or cats. I don't know if we've ever run into that, when we've asked them, but, I mean, I know with that clinic out north of town, we work well with them, they've helped us with quarantining before.
And I just gotta make those calls, I just...
And you know, going back to the rabies, there's no true test to test a live animal. The animal has to be put down to have a definitive test to make a hundred percent sure that the dog does or does not have rabies, there's no live test that...
The brain has to be tested.
Exactly. And the only way to do that is put the animal down. So quarantining, you know, a dog, I mean, yeah, a dog can show signs of rabies, but the only failsafe test is...
The language I put in here, huh?
Pardon? To test a dog for rabies?
No, that you can see with confinement if it has rabies.
Possibly, but that's not, that's nowhere near, I mean, not all dogs show signs.
Right, but if it dies, you can test it, if it, and it's, oh, it's not, people aren't being jeopardized by the dog continuing to run at large if you have it confined.
What I had put in here is that when we take it to a vet to check for observations or signs of rabies, and the vet...
Right, but I'm saying if I get bit by a dog and it, and I don't know if it has rabies, I'm not gonna trust just by looking at that dog and say, well, I don't think it has rabies. That's my point.
So you think when you language, the dog has to be held until it can be determined?
Because it might be too late, right?
You missed my point, the only way to determine a hundred percent if a dog has rabies is to put it down and test the brain.
How, if, if a dog has a, and I don't know the answer to this, if a dog has a rabies vaccine, is it protected a hundred percent?
I think I'd be a good question for a vet, Ray.
That I don't know, yeah, this is way above my...
I don't know that.
So... I would say yes on that, I'd check that out.
I'm gonna interject, um, I'm Kelly Kelly, I grant, directed animal care and control for a couple years and worked there for fifteen. When it came to bites and rabies and quarantine periods, what we did is if that owner of that animal couldn't provide a current rabies taker certificate, we'd call the person bitten, say, hey, we don't have proof of a current rabies, you need to go to your doctor and follow their instructions. That way it kept any type of medical scenarios off of the city, and you need to have all your doctors over. It was up to that person whether or not they went to their doctor, that is up to them. If a dog or cat had a current rabies vaccination that bit, they were quarantined at home for ten days. They were confined, we watched for symptoms, after that ten-day period, they were released from quarantine. If we cannot provide a current rabies vaccination, they would go to best office shelter or something like that to be quarantined for a ten-day period. Now, with Benton County, the hard part of that is finding somebody to contract for those ten days for bites. I look at the state laws, see if that quarantine is needed, or if, even if they don't have a current rabies vaccination, if they can be quarantined or confined at home for those ten days. And then the owner would have to report any signs or symptoms, et cetera, um, and then release. It was an understanding with the officers that if we got a call saying, hey, we're showing signs and symptoms, the animals automatically removed and tested. Sheriff, you was correct, the only way to test for rabies is for that animal to be euthanized and the rabies matter recent to be tested. We took it down to Fordville to Oakville, they test, Iowa State might test, I'm not sure on that one. But, there might be some wigglegram for quarantine periods off that ten days to do it at that animal's house. Now, it needs to be within the shop, the bar, my house, where they're actually confined, and not just running out their yard. And then you're gonna have to trust the owners to in fact do that. If they don't follow that quarantine period, then it might be a question of, okay, they're not following the quarantine restrictions, the dog got loose again, where do we go from here? Uh, but that can be on a case-by-case basis. So with the rabies, I think the big piece missing is whoever is going to be doing the bite investigations, it's just that communication with that person who was bit of, yes, they provided proof of current rabies vaccinations, no, they didn't, you need to contact your doctor and follow your doctor's advice.
And that's what we do now.
Yeah, yep, and it's a really simple, easy way to do it. Yeah?
But the, the problem with it is though, you may have people undergo shots that don't need to. And I'm saying it's not a fun process.
It is not, I've had them.
Well, that's why she said she's kind of leaving, you know, to...
If you leave it up to that, which includes it, that is their decision to take over their own medical care. And they have the information that they need to contact your doctor with.
If the dog is euthanized and they run the test, how long does it take to get the results back? Is it immediate, is it...
Usually twenty-four, thirty hours.
I was bitten by a bat, and we had to send that head into Iowa State for testing, it was like, within two days, I think.
So bite victims don't have this luxury to sit around and wait, is the issue?
Right, oh, you've got zero to three days to get your first shot.
Yeah. Yep.
That's what I was trying to factor in here, as soon as we could, at least get it in front of a vet.
But that is not gonna save, the person's gonna still have to go through the rabies no matter what. You can house that dog, the only thing that dog, you're finding out whether it has rabies for itself, not for the person he bit. Because if you wait past the ten days, I waited till five, and I got a bunch of crap for that, so...
And I don't, I can't speak to like Benton County physicians or area physicians, but I know a lot of the physicians down Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, as long as they knew that dog was quarantined and you communicated that, I wouldn't say there was a whole hack a lot of them, instead of that you still need to get rabies vaccinations. So I don't know if that's kind of, depending on what hospital, doctor...
Yeah, St., this was St. Louis.
Say it was in Cedar Rapids.
Yeah, so they were very unhappy.
And they were like, oh, you're coming, what, are you five days out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and they kinda wait.
Yeah.
But we wait, that's kinda why we...
We, we waited for them to find the dog, which was never...
Yeah, and on that, I mean, that does happen, I've had dog attacks where people know that we were coming to her with the dog, because the dog, you know, it was a repeat behavior, and when we got there, that dog was gone, and we never found the dog. And on that, it was very much a, you know, this is what's going on, you gotta have that communication piece, you know, it's up here to contact your doctor and follow your doctor's advice.
Yeah, on that, but, but having a person do it maliciously, that, that's with malicious intent.
Of getting rid.
Of getting rid of it is where our ordinance is lacking.
Well, the problem is, you're gonna have, real evidence issues if you don't have the dog.
Well, when they load it up and they drive it to the next county and dump it out, and let it attack another dog, and then it gets to the Humane Society and they deem it a vicious animal and put it down, and it ends up to the person, back to the person's property for them to bury it, there, there, it, it really brings some big eye-opening...
Well, I mean, if you have an order telling them to turn the dog over and they don't, then you can sign them, obviously.
But we don't have that in our ordinance, Ray.
The dog needs to be vaccinated anyway, correct?
Right.
By all law.
By all law, absolutely. We're not adding, changing or affecting that requirement in any way. We're not adding, changing or affecting that requirement in any way.
I feel like if the dog hasn't been vaccinated, it should be taken out once whoever gets notified that it's been a bite, that dog needs to leave the property. I don't care if you got a kennel or whatever.
I don't like the home, the home quarantine idea.
And I don't have home quarantine as part of this proposal.
You know, asking somebody to quarantine your dog for ten days, you're gonna have people that are gonna really take that to heart and do it, and you're gonna have the people who are gonna say, "Hey, he's in my yard, he's fine."
Or people who really, really love their dogs and they're gonna not make them available because they don't wanna see their dog put down.
See that happen.
Yeah.
So let me, let me clarify this. So when we're talking about the quarantine the bites, are we talking about like the removal of the dog, say, I have a fourteen year old mutt, Patty comes over who's four years old, accidentally says, "My dog," and she gets bit. Are we talking about removing that or just like an unprovoked?
Dog has to be provoked, dog has to be provoked.
There we go, that's what I wanna clarify, this is unprovoked.
You know, provoking, taunting, cornering a dog where it feels defensive, I mean, dogs have defensive instincts, and if you trigger those, that shouldn't be necessarily held against a dog, you know, if you're... But it has to be provoked, that's the one thing I'm very specific in this, you know.
Let's say we get the same scenario, but that dog is not vaccinated though.
Then you would have to, if it's unvaccinated, bit, then you have to take it in.
Yeah.
Until they got vaccinated, until they got it vaccinated.
It's almost twofold. The rabies part and then also the bite part. And it's two separate, that's what we would call it, like tests or to determine what needs to be done with the animal. We have the, we'll be wanting everybody to vaccinate their dogs and cats and everything.
Yeah.
Kinda like, like, everybody have card shirns.
But we all know that.
My feeling, my feeling to this rate though, after the dog attacked or bites somebody and it's not vaccinated, I would like something in this new ordinance where it says, hey, dispose of that dog, get rid of it, move it out of county, whatever, before this all comes to light where everybody gets investigated on this situation. They do this, it should be a five thousand dollar fine.
We can't, we can't assess that kind of coming out of county ordinance.
We can?
No, cannot.
Okay.
Cannot.
We, we do have minimums and maximums, I think, provided to a...
There's actually statues, I can't remember which one it was.
I can't either, but it does provide like, you can have like this as your minimum, up to this maximum, and then reoccurring, you know?
It's three thirty one...
I'm not worried about reoccurring, I guess it's not high enough, we're not gonna move the dog.
Right.
That's what I feel like.
Three thirty one, three oh two.
I, I think our vet does, if it's bitten a person and we can't prove a rabies vaccination, the dog has to be impounded.
Agreed.
That offers, that offers our citizens the most protection. Now, we've just gotta work through the finer points of where are we gonna put it, how's it gonna get there, and all of that.
And my thought was, if you have a bite, you need to take the dog, because you need to figure out what's going on with it. I think that was my approach.
Even if, and I would add this in, even if the dog is in its own yard, somebody goes to knock at somebody's door and the dog's in there on its, in its own place, okay, that is it. As far as the removal of the dog and stuff, it would be for not being vaccinated. The removal would not be for a vicious animal, because the dog's where it's supposed to be. It's on its own, it's on the owner's property. We need to make that clear, that if the dog is on the owner's property and it's not being teased, taunted, tortured, cornered, and it gets somebody's ankle, whatever the case may be, but it's where it's supposed to be.
Then how do you protect delivery people and have to...
But if the dog is not vaccinated, it needs, it needs to be taken in.
Well, obviously it needs to be, till we figure out...
But if it's vaccinated and it's on its own property...
You could refer back to the old ordinance, right, where if it's vaccinated, it's on its own property, then you could go back to the two bites in a year type of thing.
You could.
I think unprovoked versus provoked is the main thing for the political and tax and delivery drivers, that you're building a house, walking the sidewalk, walking the driveway, being where you're supposed to be and not walking around the back of the house or to the, you know, back of the shop. I think there needs to be some protection for those delivery people who are doing their jobs.
Or deputies or...
But, like I said, I think the provoked versus unprovoked is the key word there, because I know with vicious or dangerous, it says unprovoked. If somebody was delivering a package to my front door and got nailed, I'd say that's pretty unprovoked, they weren't teasing or threatening, et cetera, so then that would fall under the one section of vicious or dangerous, or what we're calling it. But if somebody comes onto my property, I have my dog outside with me and they come at me up my name, which has happened before, I have a dog that's gonna nail him. I live by myself, out in the middle of nowhere, I want that protection. But it would be a provoked bite because they were physically coming at me to be harmed. So I think you're really gonna have to play on that unprovoked versus provoked word for those bites.
And now we're gonna leave this in law enforcement's hands to investigate and determine what is provoked or unprovoked.
Yeah.
We're making this very difficult for our deputies.
Clear and simple.
I don't see how you get around, Josh, you gotta have some...
You gotta have some discretion.
Yeah.
What if, like, we include factors? To like what, what signifies, which provides direction, would that be something helpful, like what is a provoked?
There is language in here, teased, taunted.
Okay, so those are, those would be like the factors, like...
Cornered.
With my situation, with my dog, the garage door guy installing a garage door, the garage door went in his area and unplugged his fan to plug his electricity in. And he was in his surround with electronic collar. So you tell, you know, Ray, you're getting on private property here, right? I'm very disappointed that we had the two bites like Josh just said and, and you've taken that out, you're, you're, this, this ordinance was, was for dogs at large on public property, doing harm to other, to other people's animals. What, what, my dog can be on my property, I've got a sign out there that says, "No trespassing." Private property, we don't have the delivery for any packages, our mailbox is clear at the end of the lane, at the hard surface road. So no one needs to be on my property. Even the sheriff's department can't come on it with that sign on there.
No exceptions.
So you're, you're getting into public, private property with this dog ordinance. If my dog bites somebody, as long as it's vaccinated, uh, I can show proof of that, I've got liability insurance to cover the bite and any medical. So your, 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 your dog itself, I, I would be scared of yours, Ray, when I walk by your fence if I stuck my finger in there. So, you know, for having little kids where you live at.
That's why the fence is way back from the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying they walk right by it every day. So you, you get on my private property rights, you're gonna, it, it, it's a problem you're getting yourself into.
If you look at...
Do you warn the people that come that they could be seen a dog bite? Like the garage door opener, do you warn them?
What's that now?
Do you warn the people who come on your property to do services like plumbing or...
We, we don't, I do all my own stuff.
Well, you just said you ask like garage...
Yeah, that was, that was then, this is now.
But do you warn them that there's a dog that could bite?
We, we don't have anybody come on our property.
You just said you did.
I, that was before we knew he bit.
Steve, under the definitions number fifteen, subsection C provides exceptions and it describes exactly like you just described your situation to be. So it would protect you in that scenario and protect homeowners, but dogs on their property.
But you're getting the sheriff's department involved again.
Well, I think that's there.
It, it's there, so I can say if my dog bites somebody, you must have provoked him by looking at him, he had a smell on him from another dog. So...
I don't necessarily think the sheriff should have to do this, but no one's giving you the direction on in terms of how we do it otherwise is the issue. I put in here the designation of the board for law enforcement, so I, I mean...
We, we know that the goal is gonna goes to the sheriff, we know that.
Well, no, they asked me to do this, they wanted...
For the protection of the people, I don't think they have a problem going out and collecting this base information.
I mean, we have no problem, that's part of our job, we'll investigate something, we'll respond, we're just not in the business, we, we don't have a way to capture or transport animals, that's our...
I think Ron's comment is, earlier comment will help us better than trying to figure out provoked or not provoked, and that is, is the dog where he's supposed to be? So supposing you have a dog in a kennel and somebody comes in and a little kid goes up and wants to pet the dog's ears, sticks the fingers through the kennel and has a bite. The kid wasn't provoking the dog, but the dog was where he was supposed to be, is that now a vicious animal?
I say no.
Okay.
Dogs where it's supposed to be, it's on the owner's property.
Confined.
Confined.
Yeah.
On a leash, in, in town.
This wouldn't, ordinance wouldn't make that a vicious animal bite.
The, the other comment is I think you've improved the definition of at large at number seven under definitions. But if you will look at eighty point zero seven, that's sort of a little bit conflicted. It shall be unlawful for any owner of an animal to run at large. How about instead of at large, off premises? Because I'm letting my dog run through my field, he's running at large.
I would...
He's on my property now.
I'd be okay with off premises or at large. Because you're gonna have dogs that are at large in public, in parks, or on other people's properties, you know, and, and, and if we can't find the owner to determine if it's off property or not, that would undercut what we're trying to do. Because we don't know whose dog it is, we, I mean, obviously it's off property for somebody, but if you're gonna have proceedings arising from it, you need to be able to say, okay, was this person's dog on their property was off? Whereas, I, I'd be fine with putting either or in there, but I think you need to have that category where the dog is just out there wandering around, nobody knows whose it is, where it came from, it's presenting a danger, we need to be able to act on it.
And along those lines, what happens if there's a stray animal and there's no owner identifiable? We have no idea if the dog has been vaccinated, how do we respond to those calls?
Happens all the time.
So then what is the process for that?
You mean just, would be just, somebody calls in and there's just a, a dog wandering around?
Yeah, like a, just a potential stray.
People will sometimes confine the dog, they'll take pictures of it, we'll put it on Facebook, hey, you've seen him, anybody know whose dog it is, nine times out of ten, yes, we find the owner. Unfortunately, there are people that are dumping animals. And so we give it two or three days and if nobody claims it, then we, we trip to Humane Society and they'll come and pick up the dog. And they take it back to their facility and try to adopt it out or, or whatever, you know, I'm sure.
That's been really successful, put calls on Facebook.
Yeah.
Just to ask where you can find them now, and once you see, you get, you get them.
It's usually, it's usually a citizen will say, "Hey, this dog's been hanging around," you know, "It's friendly, it, you know, it came, it comes up to me, I've been feeding it." It's just good citizens finding animals and taking care of, you know, because everybody loves, you know, most people love animals, you know, nobody wants to see an animal put down or, or whatever, so...
What do they do in other counties?
The bigger county have their own employees, like Lynn County, Johnson County, who are, who have their own department that run around picking them up.
Right, but there are smaller counties.
Yeah, smaller county, I don't know.
Probably like a, still with on a case by case basis and...
And that's going back to social media, there is a ton of small towns and town animal groups and those are amazing, I've seen so many people say, "Hey, I'm missing a dog." Neighbor, two or three towns say, "Oh, they're at my place." And it's a really easy sort of return. I don't think that that should be solely what Benton County should rely on. But I would say ninety percent of the time, animals return because of those groups.
I think the numbers are higher, obviously.
Yeah, yep.
Once in a while we'll get some people like, you know...
It's very successful.
Nobody's claiming this dog, so then, you know...
Yes.
Our first, our first instinct isn't just to trip to Humane Society and cost the county money, we're trying to save the county money and try to find, you know, the rightful owner. And most people, if their dog gets out, they're very, you know, apologetic, "Oh my gosh, my dog's got out," you know?
And maybe this doesn't happen very often, but say it was a dog who we can't identify its owner, if, for all intent and purposes, seems to be a stray but bites someone, what is the process for that?
Can you, say that again?
So like, say stray dog is, you know, wandering around, you know, in most cases, maybe they're friendly, you know, neighbors can, can find them, they can find their home again. But what if that dog is responsible for a dog bite, then what happens?
And we do or do not know who the owner is.
We don't, so it's just a stray.
There's not that much we can do, if they don't know who the owner is, can't charge them.
So does the dog just get put down or what happens?
Goes to shelter.
It goes to the shelter and I'm not, honestly, I'm not sure what they do with them, I would... I, I, I don't wanna speculate.
I'm sure they observe it to see whether it has, you know, concerning issues, and if it does well, they probably put it up for adoption.
Right.
So that, that would be the process then for Benton County is you guys would take...
That's what we do.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if it comes down to, there's an animal that we just don't know what belongs to, nobody's claiming it yet, then we'll, we would call the Humane Society and they, you know, there's a, a feed, of course, but then they there's a process, you know, they check to see if it's friendly, you know, whatever, and then, like Grace said, they probably adopt it out or...
I was just thinking in the instances where a stray would bite, and then what do we do, do we, is it the same, call the Humane Society, watch the dog?
Well, I can tell you, if a stray bit somebody and nobody claims it and it, we don't, it's, it's gonna be probably put down almost immediately and sent to be tested.
Okay.
Usually, in the past, I went to a veterinarian.
To be tested?
It just went to the veterinarian to be watched, before it was destroyed.
That, that's who I know in the past...
Case I'm thinking about right now.
We've taken them to Dr. Miller, uh, Doc Wood told out by Bell Plains to do that. They would hold on to them and...
Because I was just gonna say, not all owners might go chip their dogs. It's, you know, a personal choice, I guess. But for all intent and purposes, the dog seems to be a stray, there's no identifiable owner, maybe it's lost or got off the property. And, and then, you know, how do we deal with those situations, because if it, it does belong to someone, how do we identify the owner? You know, so they...
And that would take somebody coming forward and claiming the animal.
Yeah, and I think that's other keys.
It's one thing to catch the animal, you know, when it's at large, like you said, but, you know, years ago, we had a lot of trouble in Benton County where they just take out of county dogs, you know, and just open the door. Wow, nine times out of ten, you could not catch that dog. You might be able to put some food and water in a bowl and feed that dog, but as for it, hands on, no. Well, that was a total different story back then. I don't think we have that so much anymore in the county, where they're bringing dogs into the county and turning them loose, and we, we don't have that.
Like I said, it happens, you know, it happens, but it's not a, it's not a real frequent thing.
Yeah.
And I know there are groups in the area now that if you do have a stray dog that's just skittish, you can't catch it, it's not, it goes looking at you. There are groups in Alaska especially, you call them, you say, "Hey, this dog's been hanging out this area," they'll contact landowners, neighbors in that area, see if they can use their ground, set up traps, watch it, they have cameras. A lot of those groups will do it for you, and then they have resources for rescues or shelters that they take those on to. But you gotta do this at, before to make sure there's not an owner to contact, so...
Well, I know there's farmers that take care of the situation themselves also, you know?
Yeah, yep.
I know that's not a real...
Yep.
It happens.
It's on their livestock, they will.
Right.
Yep.
Do you have a list of those organizations or I can get them, that would be nice.
I have met with Kelly. I have met with Kelly. She works in the successor office. Throughout the process, she's been really helpful, she's shown me a lot of the forms and procedures they had in Lynn County. I guess, there's not going to be a perfect ordinance coming out of this, it's just impossible to meet every concern. So I think we have to figure out what our priorities are and go with that.
I do think our priority should be if there is a dog that is attacked, livestock, another dog, a person, and you know who the owner is, that dog should be impounded. Because back twenty-five years ago, when this ordinance was written, we had neighbors, I was the reason that it was written. We had neighbors that moved in next to us and were raising pit bulls. And they came down and killed our dog. We knew who the dog belonged to, and, and, but they told the supervisors made the decision to have the dog impounded by the owner. And so we lived in fear for quite a while, my sons were young. They couldn't walk down to the bus, you know, because of it, so. It's just, yeah, it's really hard on the people that are affected by it if the dog is still with the owner. Because the owner's irresponsible.
And our daughter went through the same thing just the last three months where two dogs, and not pit bulls, herding dogs, came on the property and killed cats and chickens and just took them by the neck and drug them away. And they live in fear, it's like, when does this animal turn on people?
Yeah.
When we have a little child in the backyard and it comes in unprovoked? And, you know, that's the fear that people live with, and I certainly.
Well, Ray, I think you've got a couple changes here.
Yeah.
I kinda like the one change here.
And, and to answer your question of the civil infraction, Tracy, um, Iowa code allows us, you know, nothing more than seven hundred and fifty dollars for each violation. And if it's a repeat offense, then it's not to exceed a thousand dollars. So seven hundred and fifty is the most you can.
I'll just put that in.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted to say that.
I'm gonna say.
Even that ain't that much.
Give it some teeth at least. Something with interference or obstruction of a law enforcement investigation, they, they go, they hide the dog or.
Yeah, there, yeah, there are options to go with that.
Sure.
Got that, Gary?
To be able to cite that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm just trying to think of like, the wording, of being like, hey, still be aware of other Iowa codes that may be applicable to, which would include that.
Okay, so you cite these people, what if they don't pay it? Like, if you, if you don't pay a speed ticket, you lose your driver's license. What's, what's, okay, so you cite me for seven hundred and fifty bucks, what are you gonna do if I don't pay it? What's, you probably go through our collections.
And those collections people, they'll, they'll, um, either get a wage assignment, or they'll do a garnishment, and we, we do about twenty-five garnishments a week right now, so.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure, you know.
Yeah.
We have a, well, somehow this part, they don't care if you give another ticket, you know.
So we're, sorry, just clarified, what are we citing? That has to be on our community board, is it for all offenses? Obstruction, no rabies, what?
When the dog bites somebody, and it's before the law enforcement gets involved, when it starts an investigation on the deal, the dog disappears.
Correct.
The owner takes it away, it's gone.
I gotta add a, no, I gotta add a section to discuss this. If that's prohibited behavior, what's the penalty will be?
Okay.
And we don't specifically address that. So I can do that.
That's what I'm concerned about, it disappearing.
Yeah.
When, when we get things finalized, Dave, could we help you guys if you were to get with Ray and have some forms made that are two or three carbonless deals that, you know, for an impound, you know, it falls within the, the code, they can just give somebody the form and say, so they don't have to make a trip back to the office to try to get all this put into writing. I'm just wondering if that might be easier for you guys.
That was something I included on my list, that I wrote to myself, talk to sheriff and talk about maybe having drafted language.
And I, I.
And kind of stuff that.
I've talked to Kelly, she has forms that they use in Lynn County that kind of fit that need.
Whatever, check the box and sign it off.
Yeah, just let me know what forms you guys are looking at, I can get your cost of utilities for the city, and you can edit that to whatever. Um, impound, the quarantine, the surrender, the.
Yeah, we take all those.
Yeah.
Whatever we come up with, like Grace said, it won't be perfect, but whatever we come up with, it's going to be greatly improved. I think, whatever the final thing looks like, it's going to make a lot of procedures and definitions and responsibilities much improved. In light of that, I'll jump in on this, I would recommend that we not go with breed-specific ordinances. Um, you're painting everybody with the same brush, and I wouldn't have a pit bull if you paid me a bazillion dollars. Here's my fear. You or a future board down the road may say, oh, we have a problem with rottweilers. Well, now, I have to move or my dog has to move. My rottweiler is obnoxiously friendly. She makes a rocky, got a dog, don't write that down. But it gets very easy to start to add rottweilers and German shepherds and beagles and foo-foo dogs, what have you. If we got these definitions and procedures more clearly outlined, I don't want a pit bull, but I don't know that we should paint everybody with the same dog wound iron, but.
I'd like to address that a little bit. The reason that the people moved into our county twenty-five years ago with pit bulls was because.
They couldn't keep them.
They couldn't keep them. So that is the big reason why we put breed specific in there. It is a known fact, pit bulls bite more than any other dog. Google it, you can find that out. I know I personally do not like the dogs, but they have gotten a bad rap, there are a lot of insurance companies that won't cover on your household insurance if you have a pit bull. There are reasons for that.
I've talked to two different insurance writers, one on Thursday and one yesterday, and both of them told me, each one of their policy is, the dog gets one bite. Don't care if it's a scratch, puncture wound, or really bad, one bite. That's it. So they send a letter out and say, you're on your own.
They are just so more capable of killing.
That, that's, that's where I come from on the, the breed specific with the pit bulls. We know that if you go back and read statistics, yeah, your, your little household dogs, there are more dog bites with those than with pit bulls, but we also know that if a pit bull does attack, just because of its size and strength, it's much more serious.
I'm gonna play with them, so I'll get on the reach though. The one thing that I will say about pit bulls is they will let you know off the bat whether they're friend theirs or not. I've never walked on a property and had a pit bull sneak up inside me or behind me and nail me. I had German shepherds do it, I had bloodhounds do it, but not pigs, they're usually pretty upfront of what their document is going to be when you see them. If you're going about the damage of the bite, that's any large dog. That's German shepherd, that's rottweiler, that's a lapse. I've been bitten by chihuahuas and boxers, but like you stated, their bite isn't going to be what a large dog is. I'm not for or against breed lists, it's like, just because that's not something that I want to get into. But I can tell you right now, I'd rather walk onto a property with a pit bull than a German shepherd, any of the.
Just for clarification, with these specific breeds, does that mean that an owner would have to notify the board that they have a dangerous animal on their property and that gets tracked? Or they're not allowed in the county?
Pit bull?
Yes, because it, I just, where it says.
They're not allowed in the county at all.
They're not allowed in the county at all.
Dangerous animals are not allowed. There's, there's a problem we got with the pit bulls. There's no meat behind the ordinance, so you say they're not allowed. We go out and we serve a removal order, seven days, we go back to check, dog's been moved, relocated. Come back a month later, the dog's back. Okay, there, we can't, there's not a lot we can do to enforce it. So more and more pit bulls keep, they're everywhere in Benton County.
We just went through with Keystone. Turned out, they all got to keep their pit bulls.
I was gonna say, and if you adopt.
Because they're, they're.
And I'll be honest with you, we're talking about breed-specific animals now. From experience for both of us, when we see there are some pit bull owners, that those dogs are trained to protect the doe. So when we go to apprehend somebody, and we both have to put pit bulls down that have come at us. That's what we see, our perspective, I'm not saying they're all bad, but our experience. Specifically trained to.
And, and in my situation, they were associated with drugs. They were shipping the pit bulls to fight in other states along with drugs.
So if I could go to eight, eight actually.
It comes down to us getting bed bored to put it down. It comes guarantee of that it's not vaccinated.
Yeah.
Now, these are just instances that we've seen.
Right.
So there's two triggering factors in it though, it's a dangerous species and is declared to be dangerous animal by the board of supervisors. So does the Board of Supervisors have to declare the animal dangerous before it can do anything? Or, I'm not exactly sure, do you have to have both of these?
The ordinance specifically lists what are dangerous animals.
Okay, and so these are the dangerous animals by the board of supervisors?
Yeah, yeah, and.
So be it just the caveat today?
I've got one question. So, give us this scenario, my dog bites someone on my property right there, plain and simple, is it a vicious dog in this ordinance right now?
Not per se, no.
Not per se?
Right.
But you, what, what the person says, I didn't provoke that animal?
You, you have protection because they're adding the signage too, so you have signage.
So you have the signage, it tells me, but you're protected the way it's right now.
The dog's in your yard.
You have signage.
Where it's supposed to be.
You're telling people not to come up and.
Well, what happens if it, if, if you did have somebody on there, a friend or somebody, and it bit him, I'm, I'm just, I'm, so it, it becomes a vicious animal right away then?
No.
Then it comes to the provoking, not provoking factor.
Well, but he, he didn't, what, they didn't provoke him. But here you're getting on private property. It used to be where you had two bites in twelve months. And you've taken that out of there. That, that, that should be on private property. That, that language should be put on there. Deeming my animal a vicious animal on my own property when something happens, we're drawing a little fine line here.
So, as long as you have that sign that says like, you not enter dog on premises or language, but if that, then it wouldn't be.
Well, you, you, I don't think you can go by that signage.
Even if the signage is there.
Notifies.
We could put language in if the person has there to be.
Why, but why are we, why are, this ordinance before was for animals at large. Off, on public property. You are getting on private property rights, Ray.
Well.
Before this, we, we had, we had that in, we had that in the old section. What, why don't you read that to us?
What you're condoning though is.
A vicious animal uh, on, on number five from the old ordinance. You've taken that all out of there.
Again, though, if we go back to what the officers were sharing is that, or, or even this lady, um, her experiences with the pit bulls, technically, they were on their property.
No, they weren't, they were at large.
Okay, well then, the ones that you guys talked about where they're trained to protect the doe, were they on their property?
They were.
So in those instances, then, what do you do? Like, if, if you make it a, a case or, I mean, it gets more difficult, the more specific that you're trying to get, and I think that if an owner cares about their dog, they put the sign up, they're, they're warning other people coming on the property that, hey, I potentially have a dog that will bite. You're coming on my property knowing that you're taking that risk. I mean, the Board of Supervisors has included language for variances, so it's not like that dog is going to be taken away right away because you've done things to protect your dog and yourself. But I think that potentially, if we were to go back to, you know, you're allowed to keep whatever dogs you want on your own property, then we can't enforce dangerous animals if they're on their property.
The other downside.
It protects other people who are harboring vicious animals.
What I'm attempting to do, Steve, is to address the situation where someone has a dog come onto their private property and attack their animals or kids. If you say public property only, you're stripping those victims of any protection.
No, I'm saying, no, I'm not stripping, I'm not stripping that at all, that, that dog was at-large. It came on their.
I'm not talking about anything like that specifically. I'm just saying in general, we have to have some protection for people who are victims in these situations.
Well, I'm one of them, you know.
Well, you gotta make the ordinance, it's a balance between making it open or very subjective. If you get too subjective, how are you going to be able to enforce it?
That's right.
Exactly.
If it's, if it's too broad, then it applies to everyone. And so you're trying to get that balance. And, and of course, there's going to be discretion, there's going to be investigations, and that's why we have the process.
And that's why we have law enforcement, to make those judgment calls.
But you're, you're going to go on to a farmer that has this dog running loose, and you're going to make this judgment on a, on a farmstead? Where they've got two hundred and forty acres, this dog can go?
On their property, you know, it's, that's, that's, that's the real big issue, they'll, um.
Hell, it is, because if he bites somebody right there, you just said, it's, he's deemed a vicious animal.
If it's provoked.
But it, it doesn't.
But it's not vaccinated.
But, no, it, but it, it's not even provoked, then he bites somebody.
Then that's where we have the language to provide guidance to an investigation and to make a decision.
So what I ran into with Cedar Rapids is we were having postal carriers, federal carriers going up to houses doing their job. I had, um, somebody in that dog description get attacked by two dogs, pretty good, he went to the hospital. There was no protections and there was no living room, the way that, that said the ordinance was wrote for me to do anything about those dogs. There was absolutely no doubt in my mind that those dogs were dangerous and they were public safety. I mean, it was severe, severe fights, you don't wind up in the hospital just for a net. I think what this is trying to do is cover those scenarios, it's going to happen very, very rarely, but there needs to be some sort of middle ground, or when those do happen, but yes, filter out dog owners, where the sign kind of comes in, like, hey, we were a dog, I've been on front porches. I myself am missing a bit where a dog sign, there was a dog tether that was underneath the porch, cleaning itself. Um, I had quartering that porch, I called people for help to come get me, because I was not peeling off that porch publicly. They had everywhere a dog sign up. I missed it, it was my own fault, I wasn't paying attention that day, I mean, it was broad daylight on that porch. I still walked up to knock on the door. I am not going to blame that dog owner for my own negligence, basically, of missing that sign. One day posted, hey, we're a dog. That was kind of my own fault because I wasn't paying attention. But I think there does need to be kind of that middle ground for those severe incidents to where the county can do something when it's a truly dangerous dog versus, you know, having a dog owner like yourself that, you know, somebody was at the garage, they went to the area that they probably shouldn't have been in, and the dog bit.
But a dog, that, that kind was one IT was, was the bite. So here we're getting back to bite.
Severe.
Severe and, uh, one IT, what would you call that then?
Well, I think for public health concerns, a bite has to be reported, just kind of like what we talked about last week, just because of.
But here, here we're getting severe. My, my bites in that were two or three IT on both sides, so that was mine. So.
I don't, I think back when we originally set this ordinance. I don't, I think back when we originally set this ordinance up, it was so that there was something to fall back on. It's not, it didn't get rid of every pit bull in the county. You know, that wasn't what I was after at the time. I was after some recourse, because I had none at the time. So if we set parameters up, they don't have to be so, quite so specific, but it does give us something, you know, rather than not.
That's why you don't wanna fight on that issue of it not being enforceable because it's not, that's the direct situation.
I think also with Steve's concern, we're sort of losing track of the fact that somebody's gotten bitten, you know, I mean, people.
That's our main concern.
Yeah.
This is the person who got bit.
Can you two guys get together and think, maybe add some verbiage in this, kinda like what Steve is, 'cause I know where he's coming from.
I do too, and I.
There's two ways to look at this. To me, if the dog is on its property, and I don't care if it's a friend or neighbor, whatever, comes over and gets snipped, that's a totally different story.
So.
I, I look back, I know from where I'm at, small town, back when the live wire was personally delivered to the houses, uh, one of the gals that used to deliver opened up the door, went to throw the live wire inside the house, and she got bit underneath the arm. Dog had rabies shot and everything, it went to court and cost the insurance money. You know, and it was a friendly dog.
It was in its house?
But it was inside the house.
See, that becomes a civil matter.
Yes, that's right.
Your liability and your, that's where you, that's where we're turning to when it's on a private property.
Right, and that's why if they could get together and put some kind of verbiage in there.
What you could do is you could require it to be at large with a bite, um, and then define that large to not include dogs, um, existing on their own property. You could do it that way.
There you go.
My only thing then is then does that mean that dog has to stay confined to its property? What if that dog that's been known to bite leaves its property?
Well, then that would be at large.
At large.
But even with its owner, like what if it's traveling?
That's, that's.
If it's under the control of the owner, it's not at large.
It's still their respons, that's a big responsibility.
But they're not at large, if it's under the control of the owner.
But if it bites on public property, someone, that's when it becomes a no-no.
I think we give them some guidance.
Yeah, anywhere, I'm not sure we're gonna make it by next Tuesday, though.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I know we've got it scheduled.
You just, you got so much in my plate right now.
I know, I know. Well, maybe we can, uh, push this off, what do you want, week, two weeks?
I think you'll have to still do your.
We still have to do.
Reading.
Yeah, we still have to have the reading, but we will just table it.
I'd shoot.
Understand, we'll table it next week for the third reading.
Yeah, we'll shoot for two weeks.
Okay, two weeks.
It still has to be on the agenda because we have it scheduled. We just have to make that motion, so. It's not gonna be talked about next week, we just have to do that motion per the rules of.
Since we have public rights.
Can you approve this?
I would say maybe in your motion today, you're just.
He's got a hat on.
You're just acknowledging the second reading would change it.
I would table the second reading. The ordinance.
Well, you're not table in the second, we have the second.
We have the second.
We're acknowledging that we have the second.
So I'll move to approve the second reading and table the third. Okay, can I do that?
Yep, and you wanna say for two weeks.
I'd like to say until the county attorney is prepared.
Okay.
Maybe two weeks.
Because he doesn't know what's gonna happen in about twenty minutes.
Yeah, I know, I'm leaving Cedar Rapids, got here, just got through down there, so. I know, twenty minutes.
I would like to table the third reading until county attorney turns to us that he's prepared, and then we will put it back on the agenda.
I'll second that.
That way you're not.
You have to actually schedule the third hearing when it's time.
Yep. All for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Steve and I.
Rules, aye.
Thank you for participating, everybody.
I feel like we're getting close here.
That's a lot of, a lot of stuff. Needed that put, somebody that.
No. Right now?
It's gotta be there once.
I was gonna ask you. If he still wants to, if he wants to. Okay, yeah, you let me know what's going on with that. Oh, I didn't know that. That's what you guys, I know you're worried, because we were running late in America, and you had an appointment.
Oh, no, just, it's with, uh, just, uh, the health board, not the health board, but, uh, I had that at seven this morning, so I'm good. I just have sore teeth.
Oh, what about you, are you gonna make yours?
Uh, no.
So I'm, you should do whatever you guys want to scan.
It's up to you. Yeah, yeah, we'll do that.
You got anything?
Nope.
Better Howard.
Uh, the time is ten thirty. For the for evaluation of maintenance director, Rick Wood. Uh, Rick, can I? Communicate that he'd like to go into closed session under Iowa code section twenty-one point five, paragraph one, to evaluate the professional competency of the individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless, irreparable injury to the individual's reputation and the individual's request is a closed session.
That's the motion.
Okay, all for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Steve and I.
Rules, aye.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna have to have everybody out, sorry.
And the next one?
We have to turn off. Sheba. We're just making sure they got all our stuff this thing.
We don't come back in.